Good evening, everyone. I'd like to convene tonight's planning board meeting of October 20th. Before we begin tonight, just have a brief interruption. I'd like to introduce PAC 164, the Weebalos, here in Portsmouth.
Do we stand? No.
Right along here, guys.
Right up here. There's a small one.
The line.
PAC 164 has been working on their civics badge and going over items that happen in city government. And tonight, they're coming to see a planning board meeting, as well as they got a great tour of the camera studio. And their next visit is going to be to the courthouse to go visit a judge. So I just want to thank you guys for your hard work, and thanks for stopping by to see us tonight. Okay. Thanks, guys. Do you want -- oh. I'm sorry. I did promise them one thing. You guys can wave hi to your parents at home.
Can I wave hi to my parents at home?
Please do.
Hi, Mom.
Thank you.
Of course, they live in Lewiston, but can I go?
The little one at the end is my son.
It's a little one at the end?
He carries a tremendous burden.
Ooh. Weebalos have a cheerleader, too, huh?
Yes.
That's a mascot.
It's not the cheerleader, it's their attorney.
Okay. On to our first item on the agenda, the approval minutes from September 15th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. Discussion changes on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Chair votes aye. Before we go on to public hearings, I do just want to make one announcement, that, one, we're only going to get through the public hearings tonight. We have quite a bit on our agenda. We're going to recommend the tabling of anything from City Council referrals on down to our next regular meeting. Also, as an announcement, Item C, the application of Portsmouth Farms, owner LLC, and Starbucks Coffee, has been tabled, or we will be tabling it when it comes to us. So anyone here for Item E, which is Portsmouth Hospital Office Building, we will be looking to table that one. And the application of Saco Ave Professional Building, Inc., on Brewer Lane, that one also is possibly for being tabled tonight. So if anyone's here on those particular items, just so you know that when we get to them, we'll be tabling them.
Do we need to suspend the rules to have a motion, or does there need to be discussion, Mr. Chairman?
We can certainly do that, if you like. Why don't we suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all those favor?
Point of order, shouldn't we be reading those into the record before we table them?
I'm going to read in C right now.
Okay.
So, Item C, the application of Portsmouth Farms LLC owner and Starbucks Coffee Company applicant for property located at 855 Woodbury Avenue, where unconditional use permit is requested is allowed in Article 6, Section 10, 608b of the zoning ordinance to allow the renovation of an existing building and in addition of a drive-in window in inland wetlands protection district. Said property shown on Assessor Plan 215 as lots 11 and lies within a general business district. Do I have a motion? So moved. Move table to our next regular meeting?
Yep, November 17th.
November 17th. Moved in second, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to E, the application of Portsmouth Hospital Office Building Association, Jackson Gray condominium owner for property located at 330 Bothwick Avenue, and Isinkin Woods owner for property located off Bothwick Avenue, where in preliminary and final subdivision approval, parking lot easement is requested to allow 22,738 square feet, .52 acre parking lot easement on a southeasterly portion of property on Assessor Plan 234 as lots 52. Said property is located in office research district and shown on Assessor Plan 240 as lots 2-2 and Assessor Plan 234 as lot 52. This plot plan is on file with the Planning Department Office and identified as 180105. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moving second, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to F.
And that was to November 17th as well.
Yes. Moving on to application of Saco Ave Professional Building, Inc., owner for property located at 125 Brewery Lane, wherein site plan approval is requested to construct a four-story, 26-foot by 240-foot, 15,500 square foot, 48-unit residential building with related paving, utilities, landscape, and drainage associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 154 as lot 2 and lies within a business district. Do I have a motion?
Move to table, November 17th.
Moving second, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to A, the application of the city of Portsmouth owner for property located off Suzanne Drive is known as Maple Haven Park, where unconditional use permit is allowed, is requested as allowed in Article 6, Section 10, 608b of the zoning ordinance to allow improvements to the park, including a basketball court being relocated in a wetlands buffer and installation of a new impervious walkway surface. These changes are part of a plan, a part of an overall upgrade to the Maple Haven Park. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 292 as lot 16 and Assessor Plan 284 as lot 4 and lies within a municipal natural resource protection district. Who would like to address us on this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
My name is David Moore. I am with the Community Development Department, who is the applicant for the conditional use permit. And I'm here presenting the Maple Haven Park improvements that we are working on, and you have the site plan in front of you this evening. We are updating, proposing to upgrade an existing park. This is in the Maple Haven neighborhood, the neighborhood we've worked with. The association there has been very involved in all of our discussions. We've had four meetings over the past two years with the neighborhood. They've been heavily involved in the design and have made known their preferences, which have resulted in the plans before you. The neighborhood has also been very diligent in their fundraising, so there's a lot of excitement for the project, and they've been a tremendous asset in terms of making a good plan to present for you this evening. I should also mention that the project has been funded in the capital improvement plan in 2004 and 2005. So, thank you for that, and I know the neighborhood is grateful as well, and I believe you'll be hearing from some of them this evening. We're here tonight to pursue a conditional use permit because we are introducing increased impervious surfaces within the buffer zone at the park. Specifically, the basketball court and the walkways around the playground pod towards the rear of the park. Currently, there is 2,400 square feet of impervious surface at the park already. We are proposing to increase that by 1,200 square feet, for a total of 3,600 square feet in impervious surface. As I said, the impervious surface is made up of the basketball court and the walkways, which are here and here, inside, within the buffer. To mitigate, to protect against, to protect the wetlands, we've made some site designs which we think will be beneficial to allow the buffer, the impervious surface, the new impervious surface. That includes a 10-foot vegetated swale in the back portion, which I have outlined here in green in the park, as well as some new plantings to absorb and filter some of the runoff from the clean surfaces of the walkways and the basketball court. The surfaces are also pitched in such a way on the plan so that they'll be draining towards a more heavily wooded portion of the woodland here, versus straight back to where it is wet very early and where it's very wet. So here, we have both the buffer enhancements, as well as the favorable drainage to a better, suitable part of the wetland. And again, I wanted to stress that we're working with a clean site here. These are, the traffic here is feet, sneakers. We're not talking about a parking lot, oil trappings, those types of things. So we're very convinced that there will be no impacts to the wetland at all here. Just to explain some of the rationale for the placement, we had some considerations. For example, anyone who's familiar with the park is familiar with the wooded nature of it and the wonderful pine groves, mature pine groves that are there, as well as the open space component, which serves as a recreational play space in the city. The mature pine roots have infiltrated the existing basketball court, making it unusable and unsafe. So it has forced us to push the basketball court deeper within the buffer, so as to prevent that in the future. We're also maintaining the trees as healthy as they can be, so that decay and whatnot does not make unsafe play surface underneath in the future. So we're respecting the mature pine groves there for that reason as well. We also have the plenty of space here with the open green space for teams of all ages who play sports there, organize sports. And as you know, from the master plan, the new master plan, that the open green space in the city is highly prized, so we didn't want to incur any more into that spaces at all. Just briefly, I did go before the Conservation Commission, seeking a recommendation on this project. They were favorable, and we did bring up to them, as the city staff did, the notion of using a porous application for the pavement for these two new impervious surfaces. We looked at that, and we found that it's going to be very expensive, working with our landscape architect. We heard as much as four to one the difference being in the price to bring in, to introduce an impervious, a porous application to that site. Part of the reasons for that is it's not attested, it's not used a lot for these types of things, and we're also looking at a very small amount of product for the purpose that we have here, so that affects the price. We do, however, plan on seeking bid alts to see what we come up with in terms of what the bidders on the project will show us for that price. So we're going to be going ahead with that. Another issue with the porous concrete is that we're not convinced totally from a staff perspective that it is very safe. If you can imagine the larger stones that make the concrete porous, the asphalt porous, can somewhat, can sometimes be more abrasive. So we're looking into that as a staff before we make a recommendation, we're going hand with that possibility. Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or the board.
Are there any questions on the board at this time?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. The existing vegetative swale, I'm assuming that's proposed, that's not existing currently?
I'm sorry, if I said it was existing, it is proposed.
It is. My only concern with that is, and I see you've got your native planting specified, but during construction, before those seeds germinate, what's going to happen to the plant? I'd like to see some sort of erosion control in there, either hay bales along the, you know, every 50 feet or something until that germinates, because I think if you get a heavy rain, that's going to wash the seed and the loam all out.
Very good.
So that was my only concern on that, that we see just some type of hay bales or something. Maybe we could work with staff on that.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Any other questions?
One quick comment. Love the design. My son practices soccer here, and I like the way you've done the parking lot. Question about it, though. So presumably, it's going to be gravel in the first instance?
That's correct.
And that poses no problem with, I mean, we're way back.
Exactly. It is not within the buffer.
Right. Okay. Anyone else seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public? Like to speak two, four against this application? Have your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Susan Sauerman, 2 Simons Road, Portsmouth. My name's Susan Sauerman, and I'm the president of the Maple Haven Neighborhood Association. And I'm just here to support the Maple Haven Park and Playground project. I'm grateful to the planning board and that you've seen fit to include the funding for this project and its capital plan for the past two years, and I thank you for that. As you may know, for many years, the park has needed some work. It has a lot of potential because it is heavily wooded and has beautiful mature pine trees, as well as open recreational spaces, and as my son has played there as well, with your son. It's a great, great location, it's a great space, and really do love it. We're almost ready to construct the new park, and the neighborhood has been consulted, and the plan before you tonight reflects those decisions which the neighborhood has participated in. In particular, the neighborhood requests separate pods for the age groups of different playabilities, park benches, and paved walkways for the ease of travel. The neighborhood has also conducted many fundraising activities for the park. In particular, we want a safe park for the children. This plan maintains clear lines of sight through the whole park so that it can be monitored by the neighborhood. And I just want to thank you.
Any questions?
And there's some members of the neighborhood here tonight, the Youngs, the Schauses, and Mr. Lamonting, live in the neighborhood. Just like to thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak two, four against this application? Anyone else in the public two, four against? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, Board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve with, approve as presented.
Yeah, I don't believe there are any stipulations from recommendation.
Second, no stipulation.
Other than the one from Mr. Ritchie?
Yes, thank you.
Acceptable, second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Chair votes aye. You're all set. Thank you. Moving on to B, the application of Adam H. and Francis Price owners for property located at 127 Martha Terrace and Adam H. Price and the Fritz Family Irrevocable Living Trust owners for property located off Patricia Drive, where in final subdivision approval is requested between two lots having the following, lot 7, as shown on Assessor Plan 283, increasing from area, from 15,247 square feet, .35 acres, to 90,804 square feet, 2.8 acres, and having 90 feet of continuous street frontage off Martha Terrace and Lot 11, shown on Assessor Plan 283, decreasing in area from 213,106 square feet, 4.89 acres, to 137,549 square feet, 3.15 acres, with 284 feet of continuous street frontage off Patricia Drive and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of one acre is required and 150 feet of continued street frontage is required. Said properties are located in a single residence A district and are shown on Assessor Plan 283 as lots 7 and 11. Plot plans are on file in the Planning Department Office and identified as Plan 110205. Who would like to address us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, John Chagin from Ambed Engineering.
Evening, John.
Representing the applicants, also here with us tonight, Adam and Francis Price, one of the property owners. The Board might recall that we met with you on June 16th and received your preliminary approval for this subdivision slash lot-line relocation. At that time, you issued five stipulations you thought important to the project, and we have met all those stipulations, so we're asking you tonight for final subdivision approval. The first stipulation was that we comply with the ordinance regarding submission of geographic information systems data. That data has been submitted and approved by Jason from the city technical staff. The second stipulation was that we correct Note 3 to the recently adopted flood hazard map designations. That has been done. The third stipulation was that we obtained New Hampshire DES subdivision approval. We have obtained subdivision approval. It is 2005-006375, and that approval is for the subdivision, or in essence, the creation of, or the, I would say, 28311 was a lot. It had some rights to build. We're making it smaller, so the DES has concurred that it still is a buildable lot. At such time as whomever decides to construct a dwelling on that lot, when they go forward, they would then have to apply to New Hampshire DES for an onsite septic system approval. So inasmuch as stipulation number three currently reads that we provide the subdivision approval number, and goes on to say, "and permit numbers for an onsite system," we respectfully request that that condition be amended to say, "the subdivision approval only." That's the only permit that is needed at this time. Again, if somebody desires to build on that lot, they would have to then go to DES and get a permit for the onsite septic system. The fourth stipulation was that we set the monuments, which we have done, and the fifth was that we apply for final subdivision approval, and that's why we're here tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anyone in the public like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public two, four against? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move for final subdivision approval granted, to be granted, subject to the digitized GIS data to be provided to the public.
Second.
Move in seconded. Discussions? Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question in regards to the monuments. What type of monuments have been put in place?
The project creates this line, and this line only, so we have placed iron rods. Actually, there was a monument found at the easterly end of the line, and we placed an iron rod, not at the terminus of the line, because it's in a brook, but some distance back on the bank. And we also put stakes along the line.
The reason why I ask that question is, a while ago, we had a discussion here at the Board, and I recommended that when you place monuments on boundary markers and so forth, that a pipe just not be driven into the ground, because over the course of years, that pipe is going to corrode and disappear. And I don't know how far that has gone. We're talking fairly wet area out here and so forth, but the city ought to get into the habit of placing some cement markers with maybe a metal spike or something in there that can be picked up by a meter. But I think you know what I'm talking about, John, because you said in your comment that you have found some of the monuments. And I bet you find a lot of places that you survey that you don't find any monuments at all. The only thing you have is your calculations, and sometimes, depending upon who's doing that calculation, we can have problems. So I don't want to hold this project up, and I'm not talking necessarily just for this project, but I'm talking for the city as a whole.
Perhaps what I could do is, if you direct us, we'll find out what DPW requires, and we can work with them on that.
And if they do require just a pipe stuck in the ground, I recommend that they change their policy, and we put into action something to make it a permanent monument.
Would it be possible to just have an FYI back to the Board as to what their current policy is, and if we have any stupid problems with it?
Motion to refer and report back?
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Some, is there?
If there's a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, all those favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay. Now, back on this issue. Is there any other discussion, any other discussion before I call the question? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You're all set, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to D, the application of A. Cicero and Ruth Lewis owners in Changing Places LLC applicant for property located off Faulkland Way, where in preliminary subdivision approval is requested for the relocation of eight lot subdivisions ranging in size from 10,029 square feet to 27,454 square feet, with all of the proposed lots having access off the proposed extension of Crescent Way extending through to Saratoga Way. Said property is lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet and 80 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is located in a general residence B district and is shown on Assessor Plan 212 and as lot 123. Plot plans are on file in the Planning Department Office and identified as 170105. Who would like to address us on this?
Mr. Chair? Before we continue, I have to say that I have to recuse myself through the multiple conflicts, among others, the fact that I used to play in this gentleman's yard when I was, like, 10.
Okay, so in Mr. Will's place, voting will be, Jerry?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Corey Caldwell of Ames MFC, on behalf of the applicant, Changing Places LLC. Here beside me tonight, I have two color-ups, and if I may, I'd like to hand out some reduced copies of those color-ups, so you can follow along with me.
Thank you.
This proposal is a subdivision of an existing 3.86 acre lot with one single house currently on it. Proposed are eight lots with multifamily buildings. A new public right-of-way connecting Crescent Way to Saratoga Way is proposed to provide frontage and access to these new eight lots. The new road is approximately 600 feet long. Crescent Way and Saratoga Way are currently dead-end streets. If you go up to the site, you drive down Crescent and Saratoga, they're both dead-ended at the woods. This proposed road, as shown on your handout, would connect those two dead-end streets. Now Faulkland Way to the east and a portion of Saratoga Way were never constructed, therefore they're paper streets. The northerly portion of the paper street, known as Saratoga Way, and the westerly portion of the paper street, shown as Faulkland Way, are to become part of this property to be subdivided. That's done via the paper street principle, which we have applied to the City Council, and I understand the City Council has referred that issue to this Board for consideration. We've highlighted the area on the handout, not the greener handout, but the handout that highlights the red lines, which are the proposed property lines. You'll see two areas on that handout with a yellow hatch. Those two areas represent the portions of the paper street that we're proposing to combine with this property. This is labeled as area claimed by MAP 212, Lot 123. Now, eight lots are proposed. They range in size from 10,000 square feet up to 27,000 square feet. The number of units we're proposing each lot is depicted on the second handout entitled Subdivision Exhibit Plan. The bigger the lot, obviously, the more units we can fit on that lot. The units, the buildings, range between two and four units, with the exception of Lot 2, which currently, which would hold the existing single-family dwelling, which is currently out there. Since we're applying for preliminary subdivision only tonight, topography, roadway, construction, design, utilities, sidewalk design, landscaping, et cetera, is not part of this plan set, not part of the consideration tonight. In general, the property is completely wooded. It's gentle to moderately sloped, contains a small pocket of isolated inland wetlands in the southwest corner. You can see on both handouts, we've shown that wetlands. That wetlands was delineated by New Hampshire Soil Consultants. We've shown the appropriate 100-foot wetland buffer zone. No proposed buildings, accessways, or utilities are proposed in the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. We have adequate utilities on both Crescent Way and Saratoga Way, and by joining these two streets with a throughway, we're eliminating these utilities and eliminating two dead-end streets. We are prepared to submit this proposal to the Technical Advisory Committee. We anticipate coming back before this Board for final subdivision approval after their import. Both myself and the applicants are here tonight, and we'd be happy to address any questions the Board may have.
Thank you. Any discussion at this time? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I know this is only for preliminary subdivision approval, but I just wanted to throw in that my concerns, if this does proceed forward, would be just wanted to throw in that my concerns, if this does proceed forward, would be a review of the drainage. I know the lots all conform, but that's just one of my concerns I'd just like to let the applicant know of.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the plan that you say is the subdivision exhibit plan, Meadowview Heights, Changing Places LLC, the color, I thought I heard you say that these yellow areas here, I guess my question is, what are these yellow areas? I thought you said it was exchanged for a paper street or something like that?
That's correct. That yellow areas are currently property of the city of Portsmouth via a paper street. As part of the Heights subdivision, those two paper streets were never constructed. We have claim to half of that. The process is, go to city council, make the claim, which we've done. We've applied with the city council, and I understand the city council has referred that to this board for input.
Well, my question is that you show on your subdivision plan, the Faulkland Way paper street, and unless I miss it, I don't see any other reference to a paper street on that, yet on this plan, you show the paper street.
Okay. Yeah, to the very south, the southerly end of the property, there's a heavy red line, and then there's a dashed black line just to the north of it. That represents the existing paper street.
It would come off Saratoga Way, as if Saratoga Way came all the way around.
It's just not marked, that's all.
It's not labeled "paper street," you're correct. It's just labeled "area claimed by MAP 212, Lot 123."
For the sake of clarity, I suppose we can make it a stipulation once we get to it, but I'd like to have it labeled as such. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Corey. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application?
Good evening.
Hi. For the record, Raymond Will, 125 Preble Way. I live in the Heights. I do want to speak in favor of preliminary approval to put on the table a lot of the issues for this development, but I want to draw special attention to the first and second recommendations of the planning department. The first, that the application is subject to site review approval, and second, that site review shall consider, though, is not limited to consideration of those concerns as presented in this memorandum and as supplemented by this board. The Atlantic Heights is a very unique neighborhood. It was built before welfare, before vouchers, when there was no real, not even a new deal for affordable housing. And a lot of the buildings are structured in such a way as to be naturally affordable by having low square footage and a very small yard. It's a livable space, but very affordable. My only concern is if buildings are built on the lots that somehow increase the incomes of the residents there. Right now, the Atlantic Heights is a very mixed resident, mixed-income neighborhood. Very few neighborhoods in the city do you find well-to-do right next to the poor, right next to the working poor, right next to someone who may own multiple units in their neighborhood. It's a very rare thing in any community, let alone ours, and we're a pretty diverse community. My concern is a couple-fold. First, the social aspect of that, having a neighborhood that is of mixed incomes. And second, the city has been working closely with the neighborhood over the last 10 years or so, making general improvements on some municipal property there, as well as some of the commonly-owned areas, like the parks and the streets. They just completed, I believe, a $200,000 improvement to Preble and Crescent Way. The issue there is, a lot of that has been gotten by community development block grant funds, which are done through the federal government based on income of the residences. And the Atlantic Heights has gone through times where, as ownership of the units has increased, so has the incomes, and the availability of those funds becomes less and less available. This changed when the senior housing was built, so that most of the incomes there has now decreased to the point where the Atlantic Heights, while a mixed resident for income, is still eligible for those funds. My fear is, is that if this, if what is constructed is of more moderate or high-income units, then they lose this opportunity to improve the neighborhood through those grant funds. And those grants are paid through our federal income taxes, so everybody is paying for those, not just the property owners of the city. Again, it's a unique neighborhood, and there are going to be other issues we'll probably discuss, among them, I'll probably be discussing facade, to make sure that the buildings look like the other buildings there in the neighborhood as best I can. But my concern and my thanks to the planning department for drawing that attention, that it is not limited to the consideration of those concerned as presented in this memorandum and as supplemented by the board. So, please, any ideas you may have as to how you'd like to see this implemented, make sure you dig deep in your minds and your creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Christy Cardoso. I'm a resident of the Atlantic Heights, and I'm also the co-chair of the Atlantic Heights Neighborhood Association. I'm not here really to put a position forward for the entire neighborhood, because there's a lot of people in the neighborhood, and they don't all agree on everything. So I just want to speak to a couple points about the streets and the traffic impact in the neighborhood. A big concern is that the city's invested money and effort into improving drainage and streetscapes in the neighborhood, and we'd really hate to see this street impact those efforts negatively. There's been talk about possibly one-way streets, and as people have seen the amount of yard that's being taken up by the street improvements, that idea is moving forward, and people are seeing that, yeah, there's a need for that. So I'd hate to see this street come in and disrupt any plans that we have to move forward with the rest of the neighborhood. And that is pretty much it. So just, please, make sure that as you're considering this, you're considering the greater neighborhood as a whole.
Man, Corey, the speaker?
Please.
Is there a specific impact of that road that you can point to? I mean, I see a road on the plan, and I'm curious as to...
Your Saratoga Way is very narrow. And it's narrow because there wasn't a lot of room to make it a full-size street, and there's the same situation in many of the streets in the Heights. They weren't built for cars, and most people didn't have cars when this neighborhood was built. So this spill-out could be pretty hairy, because this is a very narrow street. The other problem is, that isn't on this map, is there's an alleyway with some storage units that spills out to Curzar's Way, which is a really convenient shortcut for anybody to get to here, but it's not really a serviceable road, and it's at a very bad intersection in the neighborhood. So we'd hate to see increased traffic in that alleyway spilling out into an already busy intersection right in front of the storefronts of the Heights.
Thank you.
So those are some of the issues that have come up, and we're just, you know, hoping that you'll look at the broader picture of the road and how it works out, and really develop a process to make it all fit together.
Well, if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Continue.
If those concerns which you raise are addressed in a manner that seems satisfactory, do you otherwise have any difficulty with this?
Certainly not. You know, we're, most people in the Heights have known Mr. Lewis for a long time. Nobody wants to stand in the way of him developing his property in the best manner for him. You know, it's certainly within his right to do so. So I don't think, we don't want to stand in the way of his project. We just want to make sure that the traffic concerns and the street conditions are thought of, and that the city works with the developer to resolve these issues as this moves forward.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coker?
Just a quick question. Might I ask a favor? If this moves forward, would you return to express those same concerns? We talk, we see a lot of applications, we see a lot of people. Sometimes, what are really good ideas don't get carried forward to the next level, and we're, you know, we're only human. We can forget about them sometimes.
Right. And we have, actually, coming up in our November meeting, we've invited the developer to come in and speak with us and go over some of the concerns in the neighborhood and some of their plans going forward. So we're certainly ready to work with them and hopefully come up with, you know, some solutions that benefit everybody.
I would encourage you to stay involved in the process and stay here.
And I'm going to strongly suggest to the developer, and Corey, to please attend that meeting, and I'll be looking forward to seeing a report back on that. That'll weigh heavy on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We always find out that when the developers stay close to the neighbors and there's a line of communication that is open, we seem to get through these issues a lot easier. Anyone else like to speak two, four against? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Power, and I live at 105 Saratoga Way. I'm in a butter to this proposed development, some portions of it. And I just want to echo what Mr. Will and Christy have said to you tonight. The neighborhood is very interested in following this project and its progress. Mr. Lewis is a well-respected neighbor, and the developer is known to some of us as a responsible developer. It being in a butter, I have some concerns, I think Mr. Ricci pointed out, about drainage with the convergence of several small streets in that area, and what will happen to the traffic pattern at that end of the street if the alleyway for an apartment building adjacent to my property is suddenly used as a thoroughfare. I know that this city and this board have worked on major improvements in that neighborhood. Wonderful work has been done by the city and Atlantic Heights, and we want to see it continue. We want to follow this project closely. So I'm speaking neither for or against the project, but hope you take a real good look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public two, four against, third time? I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move preliminary subdivision approval according with the stipulations indicated, and make the motion.
Second. Second, Mr. Coker.
Question, discussion?
Yes.
It's, I still have a very hard time with this, which comes first, the chicken or the egg on these paper streets? The city council needs to act on the paper streets.
Correct. That's why we're looking at this preliminary only. We cannot do final.
Well, I understand that, but I've always had trouble with granting preliminary approval, because that in and of itself carries some weight, in my opinion, when it goes to the city council. It could be reasonably argued that, well, look, you know, the planning board gave preliminary approval, so that means something. And I've always been troubled, because I think it's been historically the policy of the city council to not relinquish paper streets. We've gone through some very interesting discussions here, and I guess I'm not, I guess I'm just not comfortable granting preliminary approval unless someone can convince me otherwise that before the issue of the paper streets is resolved, because if that doesn't get resolved, this doesn't work, period.
Normally, we would have been looking at that tonight, but since we've cut the meeting short, we will be looking at this paper street as a recommendation from the city council at our next regular meeting. Mr. Holden, you want to add anything to that?
I think, Don, you have a good point, and actually, the way this is set up is so it can be bifurbicated, which means that we will be looking at the paper street sooner than you'll be looking at this next action on here. So you'll actually have a recommendation theoretically into the council before you're looking at final or anything else. And in order for it to work, that street has to be abandoned. So if the council hasn't abandoned it, this project doesn't work. So there are several checks in place for that.
Okay, but bear with me for a moment. What does it mean, and I don't mean to go back to Planning 101, but it's important to me to keep this clear in my own mind. What specifically does it mean to grant preliminary approval? You'd think I'd know after six years on the planning board, but I just want to make sure that it's clear.
What it essentially means is that the board has found sufficient reason to encourage the applicant to proceed further. And a lot of these projects, there are a heck of an awful lot of costs preparing the final plans.
Agreed.
What you're indicating is that there's enough information at this point, so long as you address all these issues, including, by the way, paper street, to go forward to the next step so that you can begin to develop the information. For example, if this motion passes, I was going to ask the board, I'm assuming that you're looking for a drainage report.
I presume that would be added as a stipulation.
I'm assuming you're also looking for a traffic report. What you're doing is you're giving guidance to your technical advisory committee to what they're going to be looking for, so that the applicant knows that they've got to prepare additional supplemental information. And that supplemental information, it's also those 10 points that are in our memo, such as topography, wetlands, Faulkland Way's right-of-way, paper street, the proposed streets permitting, traffic assessments, utilities, public utilities, landscaping, and then anything else that comes up.
Mm-hmm.
We always get that rubber stamp. Anything else we want. So...
Okay, I guess I'm just, I'll reiterate...
This is basically just saying, in order to vote for this, we have to, as a board, agree that, yes, we see enough information here that let's move forward and let TAC do their work. Let's get these other reports together, bring it all back to us, and now we'll look at it as final, and that's when they have to have everything final in front of us. But your point is exactly what you're saying of, I don't agree with this, so I'm going to vote no on it. Or, yeah, I see something that looks interesting, I want to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Hence the reason for preliminary.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Frinney.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that might help, Don, at least with a little bit of institutional knowledge, and I'd ask Cindy or David to also chime in, because their longevity is a little greater than mine with these issues, and that is, in the past term of the city council, there have been a few votes, I think, on paper streets where they have no longer been retained by the city. That being said, there are, I can't obviously say that the council will do that, I'm only one counselor. There are a few people who have traditional positions on that that do exist, but my recollection is, there have been, I think, one, if not two, votes in the last two years on paper streets that allowed them to become private property.
In my tenure here...
And none which did not, I might add.
For 14 years on the planning board, I've seen it go both ways. Sometimes it's yes, sometimes it's no.
There's also a slight irony here. We're actually seeing the proposed completion of a street that completes the original network.
Right.
In a slightly different layout.
Right, in a slightly different layout.
Slightly different layout, that's true.
In a way, the 1919 plan is coming true.
Is coming to completion.
After almost 100 years.
Well, at any rate, it's always, which comes first, the paper street approval or preliminary, but that's fine.
The planning board comes first.
It comes first.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for asking the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ricci.
While we're giving our tidbits of down the future, I guess one of the things I'd like to see maybe TAC consider in this application is, I remember an application before, I don't remember the exact application, but I really wouldn't like to see a 26-foot-wide granite curb street go in here. If the streets that are jointed are perhaps 20 feet wide, and I'd ask TAC to look at that, so we're not putting in a city-approved street that doesn't match with the existing streets around it. And if there's a cost savings, and again, if I'm overstepping my bounds, if the developer has a cost savings, maybe that could be donated in some sort of upgrade to the neighborhood, but I don't want to see a 26-foot-wide street go in here if it's tying into two 20-foot streets where this is a dead end and you're only going to have so many units. So if you can pass that along to TAC, I would appreciate it.
Is that agreeable to the maker of the motion?
Yeah, and TAC will be meeting with the...
This planning board has held pretty fast over the last number of years to assuring that all the streets that went in were of a standard street, regardless of where it was, and we have disapproved many requests to not widen the street up to the standard. So, you know, I think we've got to take a look at what we've been doing to people in the past, as well as in the future. And the thing that kind of bothers me also on this petition is what David said. If this, the city council does not give up the paper street, this project will not be built, probably. And I feel pretty much like Don, I don't want to infer to the city council that we're giving any type of approval until we see the...
giving any type of approval until we see the way it's going to develop in, as far as paper streets are concerned. I can't vote for this the way it is now. I've lived at Atlantic Heights for nine years myself, and I know this area. I know there's wetlands in there that we haven't even talked about and things of this nature. So under those circumstances, I would have to vote against this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there anyone else? If not, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Chairman, it may be a little too late, but the one stipulation which I suggested during the discussion, which, the proper labeling of the paper street.
I believe that was picked up by the maker of the motion.
Was that part of the record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the chair votes aye.
I'm reading into that, that you want drainage, you want traffic, and you want the streets labeled.
Correct.
And obviously, the paper street decision from the City Council.
Well, we have to, we have to have the discussion on the paper street. We would have done it tonight under our City Council referrals, but I've cut the meeting. That'll happen next month. So this can't even come back to us. We won't see this again until at least December or January.
Because, Mr. Holden, correct me if I'm wrong, that won't go to TAC until we get through the paper street issue.
Until we get through it.
Not necessarily...
TAC may start it up, but you won't be sitting as a TAC committee.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, we tabled E, we tabled F, moving on to G, the application of Portsmouth-Kasey homeowner and Haylen Development applicant for property located 1950 Lafayette Road, wherein site plan approval is requested to construct a two-and-a-half-story office building with 3,280-foot, square-foot footprint, and a one-story, 6,000-square-foot function hall with related paving utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property shown on Assessor Plan 267 is Lot 7 and lies within an office research district. Who would like to address this this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alec McCochran, and I represent the property owner, which is the Portsmouth-Kasey Home Association. With me here tonight is Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance Incorporated, and Rob Woodland of the Woodland Design Group Incorporated. We also expect Rick Wesley of Haylen Development LLC to be here. His wife recently had a baby, and so he's running late. Almost ready? Okay. And just a minute, Rick will be up to start the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance here this evening on behalf of Haylen Development. The proposal that's currently before you consists of the development of a two-acre parcel with frontage on Lafayette Road to the east and a service road to the west, which can, which actually connects to West Road. This parcel land is currently vacant, and the proposal consists of the construction of two buildings. It's actually an 8,600-square-foot office building and a 6,000-square-foot Knights of Columbus function hall with a seating capacity of approximately 200 seats. I think what I'll do is I'll just point out to you some of the site features and the design, and then I'll update you on where we left off from the last TAC stipulations. This site will be entered one way in from Lafayette Road within access and egress to the service road to the rear, which accesses out to West Road. It will involve the development of approximately 150 linear feet of that service road along the entire rear frontage of the property. The zoning requires, due to the building size, is approximately 143 parking spaces. There are 143 parking spaces included in the design, with the idea that these are two opposing uses. While the Knights of Columbus is in session and utilizing the parking, the parking around the office building, which would be closed at that point, would be available. Similarly, while the office building is in use, the Knights of Columbus is likely to not be in use. There's an existing buffer that exists in the front of the lot, it's very heavily wooded. The proposal is to keep as much of that area wooded as possible. You notice on the landscaping plan, we've required that all the major trees ought to retain. We just asked that we be able to clean up some of the scrub that exists there, much like what was done on next door in the State of New Hampshire building. All of the buildings are equipped with cement-concrete sidewalks. There is a bicycle rack that's been proposed for the office building to encourage that mode of, particular mode of transportation. As far as the site grading goes, it's a balanced site, there's expected to be little to no import or export, only that, that's going to be necessary for construction phasing. And the stormwater has been, stormwater management facility has been designed to completely mitigate and renovate the quality of the stormwater from the site. Just to run through the stipulations from the October 4th Technical Advisory Committee meetings and what updates were made from the plans, I had the opportunity to meet with the water department. We added the gas line to the plan, and like I said, we went through the gate valve locations and so on and so forth with the water department on October 11th. The handicap spaces have been so labeled as which ones are van spaces, and the handicap ramps have been added to the plans. There was a request made that the 2% cross slope from Lafayette Road be extended all the way to the limit of the 12-foot easement that's required by New Hampshire DOT to be deeded to them. That change was made. Road end signs have been added to the plan, intersection, so people don't mistakenly take a right out of the driveway where the service road dead-ends. Also reflectorized chevrons have been placed to signify the end of the road. There's an off-street sign that exists at the intersection of the service road and West Road. It's in, it's in disrepair right now, looks like it's been hit a few times, and actually, it's outdated. It directs motorists to Route 101, which is now going to be changed to Route 33, so it's consistent with the other signage on the service road. All of the lighting that's designed on the site is dark-skies friendly. It was, spray tear was taken during the design to ensure that no more than a half a foot candle existed at any one property line to, so as to minimize the amount of glare onto any of the abutting properties. Snow fencing has been provided along the perimeter of this area to maintain, to be sure that the trees don't get destroyed during construction. And finally, we did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Holden and Mr. Parkinson on October 11th to discuss internal sidewalks. And where there are no sidewalks currently existing on Lafayette Road in the vicinity of the site or on West Road, it was determined that side, internal sidewalks would not be required, and that we didn't want to invite pedestrian traffic to go to an area that didn't have a sidewalk at their destination. So I guess with that, I would turn it over to any questions that you have, if they're traffic-related. I do have the traffic engineer, Rob Woodland, from Woodland Design Group here with me this evening.
Other questions at this time? Mr. Ricci.
I have several questions on the, a lot of the site issues. My first comment or concern would be that, I've got some concerns about having a potentially three-to-four-to-five-foot-deep detention basin. This being a function hall, I'm sure there'll be a lot of small children around. My concern is that if we get a storm and there's water in there, perhaps a fence, I don't know on the architectural scheme how that works, but that is one of my concerns, is that you've got a basin that size, you've got children around, and that there's no barrier between the detention basin and the function hall. So that's one of my concerns. One of my other concerns is that the only erosion control that I see on the site is on the west side. I'd like to see some on the Lafayette roadside. I'd like to see some along the property line on the south. That's one of my concerns as well. And I'll just go through them, and if you want to address them. I'm assuming the detention basin is designed for no infiltration. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I see there's a clay layer below it. I'd like to see some sort of either mulch chip every 50 feet or hay bales within the basin for erosion measures. I didn't see anything there. The proposed leaching catch basin, was a test pit done in that area to determine the elevation of the estimated seasonal high-water table?
No, not at this point it wasn't.
So how?
We did have some test pit data that was, that was obtained when the site was previously permitted, and we did use that test pit data. The soils in that area are all gravel, hydroa soil, very well-drained.
But you haven't done anything with this proposed leaching catch basin's going to go?
No, we haven't. Certainly could during...
I think, I think that'd be a good check and balance on that. I mean, if you've got half your basin filled with seasonal high water and you're assuming it's all below that, that's going to be an issue. But my main issues are the erosion control, that the only areas that we have, it's on the west side. I'd like to see some more on the southerly property line, and also along the easterly property line at Lafayette Road. And my other last comment is, that construction entrance that we have, being that that exits, well, I'm assuming that they'll go in and out of there during construction, before the road's built, I don't know is that, that construction entrance is going to be long enough that if you start tracking debris, construction debris down Lafayette Road, I'd just use that as a caution, but the other, the last final issue I'd like to see is some sort of planting specification for the basin bottom. I didn't see anything in the drawings as far as a wetland seed mixture.
Yeah, it was just said to be loomed and seeded, seeded. We didn't anticipate a wet pond. So we're anticipating that this pond is always going to drain out and be dry. We're not anticipating it to be constantly wet.
But isn't the bottom of this lined in clay?
The, like I said, the soils that are in this area, they're gravel, well-drained soil. We expect that it will infiltrate, although this basin was sized, not taking into account infiltration for winter conditions and so on and so forth.
Okay, I would assume if the soils are that well-drained, that you'd take the six-inch clay barrier out of that and use that for infiltration. Wouldn't that make sense?
Yes, I guess I didn't see the clay barrier on there.
I saw it in looking at, on Sheet D1, if you look at the detention basin detail.
Excuse me, while you're just working with your maps, if you can pull that microphone right up, yep, that'll come right out, and that way we can get a good, good record. When you step away from the standing mic, we lose you. But you can pull that straight out, so you can hold it up.
Okay.
No, the one right in front of you.
Yep.
There you go.
I guess on...
It should be on.
On Sheet D1, that detention basin detail, and again, if I'm remiss, let me know, but it looks as though there's a six-inch sand silt layer.
I think that was just an oversight for the, on, because it should have just been loomed and seeded.
I'm sorry, we can't get a good record.
I'm sorry, it should have just been loomed and seeded. It wasn't meant to have a clay layer in there. That was an oversight on the plans, because if, the drainage calculations didn't model it that way.
Okay, that answers that. I guess the last thing is, it'd be nice to get, I'd like to see some sort of wetland seed mix in there. I think if you just put a regular seed mix in there, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how that's going to work, but, you know, that's something you guys could expect. But again, my main issues are, my concerns are adolescents around there having a detention basin, perhaps after a storm, there's water, they're going to go in, who knows what, the erosion control, and I think those were my, in the test pit for the catch basin. So those are my issues, and if you want to address them greater, if you want to take under advisement, that's fine, too.
Sure, I guess just the quick response, I would agree with all of your comments. We don't have any problems with adding those features into the plan. Detention basin was designed with side slopes that were to be gentle, but I understand your concern. If we had a surge, there is likely to be as much as three feet of water in there, and to add a fence around there is no problem. To add the additional erosion control also isn't a problem. As a matter of fact, we're going to have to do that anyways when we file the notice of intent under the, for the NIPD's permit as part of our stormwater pollution prevention plan. So we can certainly add those features to the plan without any trouble.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Hayden.
Just while we're on the fence subject, what kind of fence are you talking about adding? Like a vinyl-covered chain link, or?
Yeah, probably a black vinyl-covered chain link, just sort of blend in and wouldn't really stick out as an eyesore.
Thank you.
And about five feet high, four feet high, five feet high?
Probably four feet high, where it's, you know, there's not a big drop on the other side of it. It's really just meant to keep people from tumbling down the slope, I think.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Koch.
Yes, just a question to the department. In the discussion and decision of the committee, which I, in our application, in our memo, it says, "Mr. Holden asked about the dimensional requirements. When this area was rezoned, there was a special OR zone for some lots, and was this one of them?" And the original owner of the lots verified that, in fact, it was one of those special lots. And President Reagan always said, "Trust, but verify." Has the department gone back to the current zoning maps and verified that this is, in fact, one of those lots?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great communicator. Any other? Mr. Sullivan?
David, when this appeared before TAC, did they discuss any possibility of, if this was approved and came into fruition, that the service, proposed service road could be built prior to the development of a lot, so that it would preclude trucks and traffic going out of that lot onto Lafayette Road?
No, they didn't, but the assumption is that the service road, not the assumption, the service road will be there because it's to everyone's advantage, and I assume, actually, that it would be to everyone's benefit to be using it sooner rather than later.
Okay, because we had concerns about large amounts of traffic coming out, and I see that they've precluded that on their plan. It's just going to be an entrance on Lafayette Road. But I didn't want to have heavy traffic, truck traffic and so forth, going out and causing any grief to the people that lived on the other side of Lafayette Road. Those houses are pretty close to the edge of the street.
I think if you want to put a stipulation in that the construction traffic, to the extent possible, will use that road, I think that would be appropriate, and we can work with them on it.
Fine, thank you.
Mr. Kovyala.
I'm a little concerned about the amount of snow storage area you have to the north and the south. Could you address that? Your thoughts or opinions?
Sure, the snow storage areas that have been designed on the plan, there's quite a large strip along the entire westerly side that's over 10 feet wide. There's also a fairly good strip all along here. We don't really anticipate there to be a problem removing the snow from there. If it becomes a problem, we could put together a plan to have the snow removed from the site altogether, but it seems as though there's sufficient storage, at least around the perimeter of the site, to stack up snow.
I guess, what is the, what's the point in which you decide to remove snow from the site? Because right now, I believe the site to the north is vacant, right? What's to prevent just pushing the snow onto the abutters' property?
The curb that's around here. The whole site's going to be burned and curbed specifically to prevent that. I think that was one of the concerns that came out during TAC, was to prevent the fact this site from migrating onto the adjacent properties.
And how about to the south?
There is no curb showing along there, but there's also, there's quite a much, there's quite a larger buffer, as you can see on that side. The exact width of that is over 14 feet, and it's over 400 feet long, so it should provide a fairly sufficient area.
Plus, I don't think we'd want to encourage putting snow on an abutters' property.
Absolutely not.
Any other questions? Mr. Hopley.
A question, C4, no, drawing C4, I think that's what you have there, the upper right-hand corner, your parking calculations. You notice that the proposed number of parking spaces is 143. spaces is 143 for both occupancies, and the required parking spaces for the function hall is based on the occupant load out of the building code. My question is, I've never seen a function hall with fixed seating. And part of the difficulties of function halls is actually the musical chairs and the unfixed seating, and how function halls capacities can fluctuate tremendously given different functions. And you've kind of locked yourself into this magic 200 occupants in a 6,000 square foot building, which could have considerably more than 200 occupants based on the building code, lacking any interior plan, I mean, I'm just using those raw numbers, which makes the parking arrangement sort of not enough. So, I don't know, I mean, somewhere along the way, you'll be, if this goes forward, you'll be dealing with us in parking, in occupant loads, excuse me, and I guess you might wanna think of having a plan if the occupant load is greater than 200, because again, I have never seen a function room with fixed seats.
Okay, which is very good point. This is not a fixed seat function hall. It's not the way that these types of facilities work. The only point that I've offered, while the Knights of Columbus have not completed architecturals for this particular building, is the entire 6,006 square feet certainly will not be function hall. There will more likely be a kitchen in there, there'll be estuary area and so on and so forth. And I think what the theory was, was with the round tables of 10 that they typically have in these facilities, that with the rough size of the building and the ideas that the Knights of Columbus has given us, and based on their membership and so on and so forth, that they don't expect it to ever go over 200. So I guess it's a difficult question to answer without having the architecturals here to say, "Well, here it is. Look, you couldn't fit that many tables," but that's where the number came from, was some preliminary sketches that they had come up with.
And again, and I understand what you're saying, and part of my point too is though that, given the varying degrees of possible functions, we could take those round circular 10 occupant tables and roll them up and fold them up and put them against the wall and load the place with seating like you have out there, and just all of a sudden now you've doubled the occupant load, so, and you might not have the parking to support it. So that's the deal.
I think Rick brings up a very good point, and perhaps a zoning issue on that should be taken a look at to make sure the applicant understands there's a limitation on those.
Absolutely, because, well, that's why I looked at required and proposed, and they were equal, so there's no fluff in the design.
I think where we anticipated the fluff to come from was the fact that the office building obviously wouldn't be in use while the function hall was in use.
And speaking to that, it is one lot, so I guess they could probably take advantage of that.
They'd be totaled together, though.
It would be.
So that doesn't work.
It doesn't. I didn't know if being on a single lot, you could kinda magically do that.
Attorney McKecon may be able to shed some light on this, but the parking could become a major issue.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Casey Home Association is certainly willing to stipulate that the maximum occupancy for the facility is 200 and will not exceed that as a condition for site review approval.
Thank you. Mr. Coker?
That actually was exactly what I was gonna ask him.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I have a few. Motorcycle parking. Is it possible, now that, of course, we're talking 143 spaces for this entire area, but is there possible that we can get a cement pad at each building for motorcycle parking?
Absolutely.
Now, will that change the calculations, Mr. Holden?
No, we have no requirement for motorcycles.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at Mr. Holden and sorry, look at Ms. Hopley.
We look alike.
I see that we have a dumpster area that's enclosed on the function hall. Is that dumpster area also going to include enough space for recycling bins and any, anything that may come out of the kitchen? I don't know, is there gonna be in the kitchen, any grease traps or anything, grease storage out here?
There is a grease trap that's shown on the plan that's located in this facility here. This, the, there's appears to be plenty of room, the way that that whole loading area is designed, to be able to fit additional dumpsters of recycling in there. We don't anticipate that to be a problem.
And what about a dumpster area for the professional building?
We're anticipating sharing in one, for both uses in one area.
So the people from the professional building are going to bring it all out to the dumpster behind the function hall?
That is correct.
And will you also have some sort of storage inside the building, or are they gonna track it out there every single night?
No, it'd more likely go out there, you know, once a week, as is traditional in probably most buildings. And again, just, this is gonna be a condominium association, so all that will be maintained by the condominium association. So it's not like the Knights of Columbus is taking care of the trash separate from the professional office building. So that will be maintained by the condominium association.
What my concern is, this gets put together, the professional building, at my office, I have someone that comes around every day, empties our trash can, has a big bag of trash, and we have to store it in our basement until trash day. You're gonna have a professional building here that, as it's filling up the other dumpster, as time goes on, this building realizes that they're gonna need their own dumpster. Where do you put it? We've got so many parking spaces you can have here. We've got snow storage on the side, you've got the front yard, because you're maximizing your entire lot here for parking. Without losing a parking space, where are you gonna put it? So, in thinking ahead, we either expand the existing, so that we know we're gonna be able to get two dumpsters and recycling areas out there, and that way, that is the designated spot. Granted, you may only put one dumpster out there now as things get going, but I can envision as time goes on, there is gonna be more trash, there's gonna be, you're gonna have recycling, because it is mandatory recycling in City of Portsmouth.
Okay.
We have to have storage for that.
Yep.
And again, that's fully fenced and closed.
Okay.
Thank you very much for doing the dark sky friendly lighting. We appreciate that. Thank you very much for the bicycle racks, and I think that covers what I'm usually on. Anyone else? Mr. Coker?
Just two quick questions. Attorney McKecon, you made reference to the Knights of Columbus a number of times. Does this mean that these will only be Knights of Columbus functions? Or will the Knights of Columbus rent the hall out for, I don't know, pick something, a computer show or?
A wedding.
A wedding?
The, just to be clear, the property owner is the Portsmouth Casey Home Association. The Knights of Columbus are not allowed to own real estate by their charter, so the Portsmouth Casey Home Association is a real estate holding entity that owns the property. It received a variance to go in the Office Research District, and under the variance, which I can get a copy of, it has, it's a variance for a function hall. The hall will be rented out as for weddings, for other functions, because they're not, you know, they haven't done this since they had the home on Islington Street almost 10 years ago. I mean, the uses that they rented that home out for were typically, yes, weddings, birthday parties, anniversaries, those types of functions.
Okay, so I take it that was a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay, so it will be rented, or could be, not will be, could be for, pick anything, a gun show, a computer show, antique rug auction, anything like that?
Anything that the board, the home association, would be willing.
Okay, that's A. So I think that would impact the traffic significantly, because in a day-long, let's say a day-long function, people are coming and going, coming and going, coming and going. So the traffic counts, I think I'd be concerned about that. And B, for the sake of discussion, let's say that the stipulation is a maximum of 200 people. How, and I guess I'll turn this to the city, how does that get enforced? Is it just, a fire department shows up arbitrarily one day and counts people, or, I mean, how do we know?
Mr. Sullivan? Good question.
I don't know if it's in the city ordinances at the present time, but back 20 years ago, when I was renting out National Guard armories for specific functions, either in Portsmouth, Dover, Rochester, Somersworth, Manchester, or Concord, we had to have a policeman and a fireman that was paid by the person renting the hall to ensure that the proper amount of people were there or were not there, that didn't exceed the maximum amount. And we used to have to have a sign printed up over the entrance, the number of occupants that could fill that building. And the policeman or the fireman would stand there and he would actually count people. And I have seen them at times when they've shut them off at the max. But I don't know if the city ordinance requires that at this particular time, and unless it does, you have no way of stopping it. That's why.
Mr. Hopley?
The direct answer, Don, it's on a complaint basis.
But the room is labeled for the site.
The room would be posted, but it's on a complaint basis in terms of direct enforcement.
Meaning if somebody complains, you will go, or the city will go and take a look?
Right.
Okay.
For example, if there was continued, the insurance could very well be canceled for the site.
And we'd also see police activity out there if this, if we had cars starting to spill out in other people's areas as well.
I mean, your point is, blends with my point earlier.
I mean, the green.
It's happened twice.
I missed the gun show part, though, but I was just more thinking of most weddings are more than 200 people.
Here's a case, though, of where an architectural drawing showing the function room as a part of the change, or as part of the building permit application, could trigger a discussion as to what the parking is required, and whether or not they should get a parking variance if they wanna use the function room for that purpose.
Yeah, and I'm also concerned about Lafayette Road and traffic. I mean, it's, just dumping that number of cars in and out, and let's just pick a day-long thing, Oriental Rug Auction.
Well.
I would add, just to help perhaps a lay of concern, is that because the exit is on the service road at the back, people exiting the site are gonna have a choice of either taking West Road back over to, to get out towards 33, or to, what to access, the lights up at Dumulus, you know, so they're not all gonna be coming back out onto Lafayette Road, certainly if they're gonna be heading south.
Well, they can't come out, according to what you have here.
From the service road, they could, they could get back to.
But they do have do not enter signs that labeled R5-A on either side of the, going out to Lafayette Road. So it's an, off of Lafayette only, and no exiting on to.
Take bets on that? I noticed, thank you.
What about turning into the site from Lafayette Road, if you're turning left turn in? How does that, what's right in front of there? Is there a center turn lane there?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, my name's Rob Woodland with Woodland Design Group. We conducted a brief traffic assessment for the project. There is currently a separate left turn lane all along the property frontage. We are only proposing that entry traffic would be happening at the driveway in Lafayette, so we're accommodating the left turn with a separate left turn lane into the site, and all the exiting vehicles would be pushed out to the service road, where they could turn left and back to Lafayette, or further into the park, past the water park, and reconnect elsewhere. To get to the parking question, I just, I did wanna weigh in on this. I spoke with the representatives of the Knights of Columbus and the Casey Home Association, get an idea of the type of events they were anticipating. And they do anticipate trying to rent this out to defray costs for the association. They will be renting it out to small business meetings in the day. There may be some conferences or lecture-type instruction at the hall during the day. The larger events they anticipate would be outside the typical peak periods, after 6 o'clock, more like 7 o'clock, for weddings and that sort of thing. So the influx of traffic would be, for the larger events, would be outside the weekday morning and weekday evening peak periods. The other thing I wanted to mention is, again, because these events are typically going to be, the larger events are typically gonna be held in the evening or on the weekends, I would imagine that during those times, the office parking spaces would be mostly available for the use for spillover parking. So that would help to some degree, provide additional parking spaces for the larger events. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Can I ask a couple of questions? Actually, Mr. Ricci, and then I'll pass to you, Mr. Holden.
Mr. Chairman, I was, Mr. Hopley doesn't say much, but when he does, he usually has a good point.
I believe that's a compliment.
Well, again, I have the same concerns, and my concern just got raised again where, well, if there's overflow parking, it'll be at off-peak hours, so we'll be able to accommodate more. That, that doesn't quite set right with me. I've got, I've got two other questions. On note two on sheet C4, it says handicap spaces provided, and they say that there's eight. The plans only show six, and Rick, am I correct in saying there's one per every 25 spaces, handicap-wise?
I can't, I don't wanna quote it.
If H required, only six is shown on the plan, and if six is only required, then the note on C2 under the parking calc needs to be revised to show six, so I don't know if you know offhand how many spaces are required per, for handicap?
I believe it is one per 25, but if there's a range.
I'm sorry, could you step up to the microphone, please?
I believe you are correct, but there's a range. Is this the one?
That's the one.
Sorry. I believe you are correct, but there is a staggered range. You get up to certain, like up to 75 spaces, there's a certain rate, and then after 150, there's a certain rate, et cetera. And unfortunately, I don't have the manual with me to determine it. I do recall, as a general rule of thumb, it's roughly 1 and 4, or 1 and 25, which would suggest that this would mean around six for the spaces being provided total on the site. But I don't have the IDA with me.
If, and I don't know the means and methods, Mr. Chairman, to, you know, if the plan gets approved, do we?
We're having Mr. Holden look it up right now.
Okay, and one final procedural question is, I guess one of my concerns is, when these plans go to the building department for a building permit, are, is the interior of the building looked at such that it's cross-checked with the site plan and the parking requirements?
Yes.
That is done?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And I just was trying, I was just trying to shortcut any difficulties that moment down the road would bring now.
Well, again, the off-peak, and that's when we're gonna have them kinda heighten my concerns even more, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holden?
For 100 to 200 total spaces required, there would be 3% would be handicap, but not less than four spaces. However, the more this discussion has evolved, the parking, the more uncomfortable I'm becoming. At this time, I'm gonna recommend that you table this, because I'm not certain now that we have calculated the parking based on what the true use is gonna be. And if we have to get with the applicant to work out the finer details on that, so be it. But if this is, you cannot combine the parking with another use to meet your total. It's gotta be the function hall plus the business office with the total parking, or you need to get a variance for it.
And can I have a motion to table this to our next meeting?
So moved.
Regarding the parking situation, and also have Mr. Hopley have an opportunity to take a look at the use to answer any other parking. Are there any other issues you'd like to ask? I'm sorry, before we take the mo.
Being, everybody's talking about parking, and this, and it kinda relates to my question about snow storage earlier, perhaps there's a chance of providing a curb on the south end, because I see as one possibility of people trying to fit more cars in is parking head-to-head on that lot, and I'm just trying to protect the butter.
Okay.
I'm looking at the grades, it might be able to push forward.
Yeah, it's no problem to put a berm along that side.
And then, when you say berm, do you mean an asphalt kind of curb?
That's what was suggested by the TAC, that an asphalt curb was sufficient for the outside and along the, along the.
Excuse me, along the.
the outside and along the, along the, excuse me, along the sidewalks and traffic island was requested to be cement concrete.
I guess, I guess I would, I would like to see the, the concrete curb on those as well, because I just don't think an asphalt curb is going to hold up, one, to prevent cars from just driving over it, and two, to stop a snowplow after a couple of years of snowstorms.
We'll take those under when it comes back up. Thank you.
If I could...
To add to the table and motion?
Uh, yes.
To add to the table and motion?
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Concerns about traffic, I'm not sure we need a full-blown traffic study, but unless I missed it, our packet was pretty thick this week. I didn't see any specific traffic information, other than what was presented by, just verbal. I would like to see a little more detail on traffic. I'm not asking for a full-blown traffic study, but just something that, that we can chew on a little bit.
Okay.
To add a little bit of structure to what Don is saying, stipulation number 22 is that the traffic report be amended to include components for the 200-member function hall. What we're talking about is the function hall numbers itself, and parking and so forth. And I think that speaks to what Don is saying, and my concerns, I'm looking at this, and if we touch the parking configuration, then you're also adding, you're also dealing with the access and egress from the property, and how, and how cars are shuttled to and from and so forth. So I think we've got to look more specifically at that as well, maybe even going as far as a full-blown traffic study if need be.
Okay, there is a motion on the table to table this while the public hearing is still open.
Could I possibly just clarify one point on the parking? The assumption for the parking was that we'd see an average vehicle occupancy for events, special events, larger events, of roughly two people per car. I think this is a fairly reasonable estimate for that type of function. So that's where the parking calculation was determined for the function hall, based on a cap of 200 people, assuming that we had two people per vehicle. We had 100 cars allocated for the function hall. I wasn't suggesting that we were mixing and matching the, the parking calculations, but as a practical matter, if it were to be slightly above that vehicle occupancy ratio during the evening, and the parking utilization for the office space would be well below their full, what the demand would be in the day. So there would possibly be some spillover. But the parking calculations for the function hall were determined on a cap of 200 people in the hall. So I think we've demonstrated that, at least based on assuming a cap of 200 people, we've provided the parking for that. Secondly, we did issue a traffic study, the initial traffic study, there had been requests for some additional information, specifically talking about the special event traffic. We then added that to our, our letter to develop trip generation estimates for that peak event traffic, and added that to our, our traffic study, which should be in your package. I have one copy of that letter with me, but that should have been filed with it as well. And basically, we assumed that during the peak event, the peak hour before the event, you would have roughly 80% of the entire activity entering the site, and then, and the busiest hour at the end of the event, roughly 80% would be exiting the site, resulting in 80 trips coming in the peak hour before the event, and 80 trips exiting as a maximum in the peak hour after the, after the event.
As much, and I appreciate what you've put in, but with the tabling motion of it's, it draws to my attention that the board is still not comfortable with the information that's in before them. That's why they're asking for more additional information, to have more questions. So it is normal and customary that we do table.
Certainly, I just want to clarify those two points.
And I thank you for your clarification. Constancy, on the tabling motion?
With regard to the tabling motion, and as the public hearing is still open, if we don't have this information, if I did not see it, I understand the calculation for one event, but is there an afternoon and an evening wedding on Saturday, and an afternoon and an evening? You know, that kind of calculation, how many events per year, how many, how many actual events we're going to see so that we get a...
If you're going to bring that information in?
Yeah, yes. The Casey Home did provide that to me, so that's how I was able to base that on. They gave me a letter as to what they'd allow. The short answer is there'd be one large event, up to 200 per day as a maximum use of the hall. So if there was a wedding, that would be the only event that day. And they specifically stated that in the letter they gave me.
And I think, assuming this motion carries that information, we may have to embellish on it some more when you have a meeting with, with Mr. Holden and Planning Department. Okay? So with that, I'm going to call...
To give the standard, so that everybody here understands it, and also with Rick, it is based on, the parking is one for every two persons on the maximum occupancy. So if that room could hold 400 people under the building code, then that would require 200 spaces. If it's 700, it's 350.
And it's for that reason, too, why I think the tabling motion has been made. We're not supposed to have discussions. We have a tabling motion, I'm trying to stick to the rules. Did we have a second on the tabling motion? I thought we did.
If you didn't, I'll, I'll do it.
I thought I heard we did. On the tabling motion?
I'm, I'm just asking for a clarification. Would the additional items and concerns we brought up tonight be addressed for next month's meeting?
Yes, they, they are part of the information that we're looking for.
That's all I need to know.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Also, for the, for the record, if we had brought up some stipulations that it sounded like we would have added to it normally, if we could have those drawn back to us in the, in our new memo?
Erosion control, detention base, and safety and planning specifications.
Correct. Yep. The bicycle pad, the addition of the, of the dumpster.
Motorcycle pad.
Motorcycle pad. Thank you.
Unless I missed it in the packet, I don't see the traffic report that he was referring to, so if we could have that for next time.
Yeah, if it wasn't crazy, that wasn't in our packet.
Would you like us to resubmit that, or would that come from internally?
Yes, you may have to, or at least, most likely, it's going to be, we're going to have to embellish on it some more.
Okay.
So that, you'll have that brought to the meeting with Mr. Holden.
Okay.
Or Lucy, or whoever he deems will have that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, moving on to H. The application of Richard W. Edgely owner for property located at 154 Fleet Street. Warren, site plan approval is requested to construct a 3,246 square foot, four-story building with basement after removal of the existing building with related paving utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property shown on assessment plan 117 is Lot 6, and lies within Central Business B, Historic A, and downtown overlay district. Would like to address us.
Mr. Chairman, before you start, clarification from the Planning Department, please. As a resident of 80 Fleet Street, I believe, although I did not see a notice, I believe I'm in a butter. It's pretty close. David, can you make that call? Do you know if the Macintosh was notified?
I'm trying to check that now.
It's only 100 feet for butters downtown.
Only 100 feet, so you're probably not.
Stick around.
That's, I'm on the other end of the building, so probably the front end of the building's in a butter, but I'm not, so, all right.
Break for you.
Thank you.
Although I'm a non-voting member, I'd like to recuse myself. There's a strong possibility in my office we'll have some work with this job.
Certainly, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Good to go? We're set, John.
All right, thank you. John Shagnon from Ambed Engineering, representing Richard Edgely. Also with me to, here tonight is Julie McDonald from Stefano Architects, and Dick Johnson, who's the construction manager from Pine Brook Construction. The project consists of a existing building at 154 Fleet Street. It's a wood frame building currently utilized as six apartments, and the proposal is to remove that building and replace it with a four-story, brick facade, mixed-use building. It would have retail on the first floor and units above it that are residential. The project went to the HDC and received approval from the HDC. We then went to technical advisory committee through two meetings and worked through their concerns, hopefully addressed them all. We should have all received a package with your materials, the plans. In that was the HDC certificate of appropriateness, a pretty well-developed construction management plan. We recognize that there's going to be some impact as the property is constructed. It is a narrow downtown lot with the building pretty much occupying a fair amount of the lot, so we will be looking to close a lane of traffic on Fleet Street for some of the project. There'll be two parking spaces along the front that will be put out of service for a period of time, and will be enveloped in the construction space, fenced off, so to speak. The good news is that after the project is constructed, because we are closing a curb cut, we'll be providing three parking spaces back. So the downtown will actually gain a parking space as a result of this project, and although we will be paying our fair share of revenue lost during the construction phase, we ask not that we get the money back into the future. Also in the package is a letter regarding the alleyway. We're proposing to resurface this common alleyway along the south-western side that currently is owned in common by a number of owners, and is utilized also as a conduit for some electrical services, just transformers, as well as access for pedestrians. We're going to be resurfacing that as a result of the project, not changing the grade, leaving it at the same grade, so we don't see that being a detrimental impact to any of the butters. And the letter in the packet is in support of our, our right to do that. You have a copy of the technical advisory committee stipulations, and we'd be glad to go through those in detail if you so desire. Guess I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the project, and hopefully seek your approval here tonight.
Would you like to start off, Mr. Ricci? I would, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just have, I guess, one comment, John, if I could.
Yep.
We're putting a proposed catch basin out on Fleet Street. Is there any chance we could get an oil-water hood installed in that?
There's a good chance we could, if that's what the city would desire.
I guess I would defer then, I guess, to David. It seems if we're getting a new catch basin in the street, it'd be nice to have some sort of extra check or balance in there.
My suggestion would be is that you make that a requirement, subject to review, perhaps by Dave Allen.
That, that'd be fine.
And that way, we can look at it and make sure.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions?
What has evolved to date relative to construction management plan? We've had a lot of big projects downtown of late, as you know, and we're trying to perfect that process as we move along, particularly related to street closures and safety of pedestrians passing by and impacts on...
(noise)
We have a good thing or 100.
We have it all clear?
It's smelling.
I know this is the best indicator.
That's right.
Unless I smell smoke, I ignore fire.
We have orders supposed to close the water, like, to take that out, but I mean...
I know this is the best indicator.
That's right.
Unless I smell smoke, I ignore fire.
I know this is the best indicator.
That's right.
Unless I smell smoke, I ignore fire.
We have orders supposed to close the water, like, to take that out, but I mean...
We have to wait for fire.
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 I can't find anything.
I don't, weird, I hear something gusts.
I don't know if I can hear it.
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 I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it.
I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it. I don't know if I can hear it.
We have a motion to come out of adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, chair votes aye. I'm sorry for the interruption at, uh, at home, folks. There is not a fire here at City Hall. Everything is fine and dandy. Just seemed for some reason when the alarms went off. So for safety's sake, we all stepped outside, got the all-clear. Nine o'clock, back on track. Mr. Shagman. I'm sorry. Ms. Hayden was in the middle of a question. We'll pick up, we'll resume with that. Ms. Hayden.
I was talking about construction management plan, which I know you have in the packet of information that's been given to us. And what I was gonna say before the alarm went off was that, based on our experiences with other downtown projects, what I have seen is that it's always better to have more details in these construction management plans than less. And I guess my, my first thought on what's been presented here is that it needs a little bit more fleshing out. And the second observation, based on past experience downtown and last year or two, is that sometimes these things get left later in the process than they should. So I guess I would just ask for the willingness of the applicant to sit down early with the appropriate city staff and flesh out the construction management plan so that we're not, the day before you want to start construction, out there deciding things. And second thing I wanted to ask is, the other thing we've experienced with downtown projects is the need for easements for footings or overhanging components of the structure hanging over sidewalks. And where does that stand right now in terms of easements for foundations, et cetera, with the city?
In the plan set.
Adjournment, and everyone step outside the building, please. Do you still have to go out?
I.
Wait for an all-clear?
I'll go check and see.
Usually they, they test them again before they reset them. Maybe?
Why don't we? Are we off the record?
I don't see how.
Are the cameras still on? Yep, we're still on. Why don't we proceed with the questioning until, and we'll hear back from Mr. Holden.
Yes, there is a plan in the plan set, D2, that shows the, the front property line and the protrusions, both below the surface and along the face of the building. So we anticipate, and it is a condition or stipulation, that we will have to go to the city council to get those things approved. There's also, getting back to the construction management plan and note about that on the plan set. And we've provided a first blush, but we'll definitely work with the city on bringing that to more detail. And I'm sure that as time goes by, we'll learn more and more with each project and make these better each time, too.
Thanks, John.
And we have received an all-clear, too, so everyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. One, as a downtown resident, as I've said many times, we treat the loss of a parking place like a death of the family. It's, you're to be commended for giving us back one more space, so thank you. But my concern really is more with noise. You are fully aware of the start times and ending times and days and all of that for the, for the construction. So I, I'm expecting that that will be adhered to.
Yeah, that's clearly also depicted on the plans. So the Portsmouth Noise Ordinance is mentioned on the plans, and the times are noted.
On which sheet, off the top of your head?
Sure, I believe it's on sheet C2.
Okay, I didn't see that.
I'm sorry, C1, note 7.
Ah, okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, I have. Mr. Hopple, go ahead.
John, uh, Condition 12 on, from August 30th, stipulation 12. I don't, I don't see the grease trap on the plan.
That's right. Uh, we don't feel that this, there is a place you could put an exterior grease trap. And the, uh, we, we stated that the proposal was not, would not include a restaurant. And to further bolster that, we added note 8 on sheet, C2.
And I think also the Tac Committee has recommended that that be a deed, deed restriction as well.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's a very good question, because it's, uh, it's gotta be a part of the permanent record with the property as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a.
Mr. Schramms.
John, uh, on the rear of the building, there's a, five A conditioning units in there. Are those part of the complex, or does that belong to someone else?
Those are part of the adjacent building. Those air conditioning units are for the Vaughn Mall building. So it's not.
They belong to them.
They belong to them, and they're on their, their property. The property jogs in that area, so.
It can be noisy.
Anyone else?
John, my concern is you have the, to plant the sod area in the rear of the building. So my concern is that becomes an alley. Is there, is a way for people to get into that outside of the residence? Can they come down the either alley to get into that? I just don't want that sod area to become, you know, a, a place where people can sneak down into. Let alone the fact is, is, do you really want to plant grass there when you're not gonna have any sun? It's just gonna become dirt. Is it something that you may want to put a different type of drainage surface in, or? What are your thoughts on it? Yeah, that might be a good point. We might wanna propose a, more of a shade tolerant ivy or something, just to cover the ground. But to answer your first question, there's gonna be a gate here along Fleet Street on the north side. That gate is gonna be, uh, keep padded on the outside, but have a turn, uh, hin, uh, turn handle on the inside, because it's also utilized by number 168 for pedestrian egress. Then, uh, in addition, there'll be a piece of fence here on the rear of the building that will go over to the Vaughn Mall building. So that will restrict access. On this side, there'll be a, uh, there's a chain link fence we're gonna replace that goes from the building all the way to the building. So essentially, we're, um, closing that off. Although this one is only four feet high, it is well-hidden from, from the street.
Okay.
There's also a gate here at the, um, uh, end of the passageway that, um, will be there after the project.
Okay.
So that people won't be able to get into the passageway. That's usually left open during the day.
So what would you recommend for, instead of having a, trying to plant sod there that's never gonna grow? No light?
Uh, some sort of shade tolerant ground cover.
Is it, it rocks? I mean, is it just for drainage that you have that back there for?
Yeah, we wanna leave, uh, that area. There is some drainage coming down from adjacent buildings. If you were to go out there now, you would see the evidence of some water that, that does collect and soak into the ground. So, uh, it's not a large drainage area, but, um, we're open to some suggestions.
If it's just sod, you're gonna have just weeds and everything growing up there, trash collecting and so forth. And I don't know if at that point then it becomes a fire hazard or not. So. Okay. Ms. Hayden.
John, the, um, motion to activate its security lights. What's across from those? Are there any, um, residences there with windows that?
Well, there are three.
I don't know what height those are at.
There are three locations. One location is here. And at this light is actually, uh, was put in at the request of the neighbor. So this light, motion censored, is there to assist if people are exiting that building, going out the, uh, that, that way. There's one down here, um, which is to facilitate exit from the 154 Fleet Street building. And there are no residences there. It's, uh, an office building behind there. Not that it would stay that way forever, but I don't believe there would be any impact at this time. Uh, that's offices in this building here. This over here is, um, the Franklin block, and it's a restaurant at that first level.
And I guess that was my question. How high up are those lights? Would, are, do they illuminate down? I'm picturing, you know, the person's bedroom window on the second floor there. Are they gonna get?
I believe they're at just the door height, above the door. So they're not, they're not more than eight to 10 feet above finished grade.
Okay, so, and all three of those are facing?
Down.
Either brick walls, or retail, or office?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there going to be a project manager onsite?
Yes.
And, uh, so, can we have also posted their phone number on the door, so if there's any problems with the, you know, restaurant or anything has, or any, any abutters or anyone has problems, so that they can reach them for after-hours?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
We submitted a tentative list, so, um, there'll be those contacts.
Is there any other questions? Any questions about, any other stipulation you want more clarification on? No, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Sorry it took a little bit longer to. Normal. Is there anyone else in the public? Like to speak 2-4 against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? 2-4 against this application at this time? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'm gonna close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, Board? Do I have a motion, Board?
Chairman.
Mr. Schramms.
I move with, I move for site plan approval with, uh, with the stipulations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. A discussion on the motion, please. Mr. Holden.
Could I get clarification? That also includes a deed, deed, uh, the deed note, the restriction on use based on the grease trap.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's agreeable to the second as well? Yep, okay. Anyone else? And I'm not gonna ask for the stipulation on, on removing the grass back there. I guess if it is just gonna be grass, John, if that can be maintained and, and mowed, uh, so you have your open space requirement. But I'm just concerned for, if it's just turning to weeds, that that becomes a fire hazard. So as long as there's maintenance on that. Okay. Anything else? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and chair votes aye. We're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sorry for the delays on that.
Oh, better be saved.
Exactly. Okay, moving on to aye. Yes, aye. The application, Public Service Company of New Hampshire owner for property located 400 Gosling Road, where in-site plan approval is requested for install of 560 linear foot by, of 12-foot inch drain in the location of an existing drainage swale. Slope modifications and installation of a chaining wall with related paving utility, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on assessed plan 214, slot 2, and lies within a waterfront industrial district. Who would like to address this this evening?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Rob Chindella of Dona U. Tucker and Chindella. I'm here tonight on behalf of PSNH. We're Special Local Land Use Council for Public Service. I'm gonna make a very brief introduction, and then you're gonna hear from Duncan Muller of Waterfront Engineering. He, along with Steve Height of Height Engineering, engineered this project. And then you're gonna hear from Randy Rudolph of PSNH. He manages the coal yard. Dick Despens, who's the station manager, is available to answer operational questions. And Stella Shively, who's Senior Counsel with PSNH, is also here. Just by way of introduction, the big picture on this application is, this project consolidates what was historically two coal yards into a single coal yard. It seeks a 15% expansion of that single coal yard. And with that expansion, in both volume and area, there's gonna be less coal storage than has historically existed on the site. It allows for a better, more flexible management of the coal storage. No additional traffic will be generated as a result of this project. There will be no increase in the volume of coal trucks. There will be, we expect, a decrease in the intensity on the peak of, uh, vol, the peak of those coal trucks. And that's because presently, because of the limited capacity of the existing coal storage area, ground transportation is being used to manage the coal storage. There are the kind of, uh, three elements in play. One is vessels bearing coal coming down the river have to be unloaded. There are PUC monitored, there's PUC monitoring of the number of, the volume of coal that has to be stored onsite, and there's limited capacity. So trucks are presently being used in a kind of micro way to manage the existing coal storage area, and that will go away with this project. And finally, this is an area that's below the crest on the property. It's on the riverside. There will, there will not be more visible as a result of this project, the coal storage area. There will, there will, in addition, be no increase in the height of the coal storage area. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Duncan, and then you'll hear from Randy, and obviously we'll answer questions.
Mr. Chairman, kindly note that I'll be accusing myself.
I'll be accusing myself as well.
Okay, thank you. Both of our alternates are on? Tony?
Good evening. Duncan Muller from Waterfront Engineers.
Thank you. Good evening.
Let's start by giving you an overview of the site where we're looking to do the work, and the function of the swale, which is really the main component of this project. The existing swale is this green line that's on the drawing. Uh, you can see this is overlaid on the air photograph. That swale functions to capture the small amount of runoff that's on the upslope side of the coal yard, essentially clean runoff. And it bypasses it around the coal yard so that it does not have to go into the coal yard runoff treatment system. Uh, continues around and down below the site. Uh, what we're proposing to do here is convert that swale, basically replace that portion of the swale with a covert. So there'll really be no change in that flow through that area other than the reduction in the amount of runoff that's coming off the red shaded area here. The, once we put that covert in, we can fill the existing swale, and that will allow us to extend the existing coal yard membrane. There's a hypon membrane underneath the coal, coal yard. We'll extend that up the side slope, and that will be tied on to, uh, this red line here is an eight-foot-high steel sheet pile wall that'll be driven in. And that forms an anchorage for both the membrane and the concrete pavement that'll go to the top of the membrane, protect it from the spread moving equipment down there. And then also that sheet pile wall will form a good barrier between the existing coal storage pile and the adjacent site. So it'll work well to confine that coal, coal storage to the actual coal yard. In our analysis of this project, we did look at the runoff from the coal yard. Like I mentioned, the runoff from the coal yard itself is captured by the membrane system that's underneath the coal yard. It runs off and collects in a concrete trench on the downslope side of the coal yard, runs down and into a settling basin, which is the first stage of the treatment for the runoff from the coal yard. We did, uh, pre and post drainage analysis, which I believe you have a copy of, for the runoff from the coal yard. And that existing basin is adequately sized to handle the runoff from the coal yard, even with this modest increase in size, about a 14% increase in the size of the coal yard. And that existing basin is oversized enough that it kind of can accommodate that additional runoff with no problems. Just so you know, the, the water from that settling basin does then get pumped down to the waterfront area where there's a water treatment system that treats that water before it's discharged. Another component of this project is fire protection, and we have met with the Portsmouth Fire Department, and they have no concerns with the project. The only thing they did mention was that the two existing fire hydrants that are on the western side of the coal yard, that basically the project side of the coal yard, be relocated farther away from the coal pile. Those two existing hydrants, they even said now are, are too close to the coal, and they would not actually use those in a fire. So they have asked for those to be relocated. We're proposing to put one up on the top of the hill up here, and the other one by the entrance drive, the north entrance drive to the coal yard. And those are locations that were suggested by the Portsmouth Fire Department. Uh, just as a recap on permits, we have already got New Hampshire DES wetlands permits for this project. And we did get unanimous approval from the City of Portsmouth Conservation Commission for this work. Now I'll turn it over and give you a little bit of background. Randy Rudolph from Public Service is gonna talk to you about the coal yard operations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and Planning Board members. My name is Randy Rudolph, and I'm in charge of maintaining the waterfront terminal at PSNH Schiller Station. I would like to cover three main ideas during this portion of the presentation. The successful history of the fuel management team at Schiller Station, the inventory control method used at Schiller Station, and how this consolidation project will better help control levels. Schiller Station has handled coal for 20 years without a major safety incident. The yard today, as well as in the future, will maintain adequate measures to continue this success. Inventory control helps to compact the coal to industry standards. This ensures that moisture and oxygen are kept to a minimum. In addition, the groomed coal is covered with tarps. This further eliminates the exposure to the elements. The station manages the inventory by first-in, first-out control method. This method best manages the rotating inventory. This consolidation project will help to level inventory controls and allow better terminal management by slightly allowing a larger lay-down area for stock rotation methods. In closing, we have discussed the successful 20 years of fuel management. We have discussed the proper stock rotation method. And finally, we have discussed how better inventory planning will allow, uh, will further promote the safe handling of coal. Thank you, Chair and Board members. Mr. Chindella will now close and answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chairman, we're happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? Thank you. Is there anyone in the public? Like to speak 2-4 against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? 2-4 against this application? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I have one question. Just looking at this, and it shows that you have an underground obstruction. It's gonna do a field verify. And it says, "See detail," and I can't find the detail. What is the underground obstruction?
I believe that's the existing fire protection line. As part of the wood project, the existing fire protection line that extends down to this point did get extended and comes up this slope.
Okay.
So that, the sheet pile wall will be installed over where that fire protection line currently comes up the slope.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the, uh, uh, site plan approval be granted with the four stipulations.
Okay, second. Moving second, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You're all set. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to Jay. The application of Michael J. Carr owner for property located 195 West Runway, where in-site plan approval is requested to construct a 19,400-square-foot single-story, 27-foot-by-200-foot addition to an existing building with related paving utility, landscape, and drainage and associated site improvement. Said property is shown on assessed plan 267, slot 9, and lies within an industrial district. Who'd like to address us?
I would. My name is Eric Weinrib. I'm a professional engineer with Altus Engineering. Approved?
David, could you get a?
Yeah. Yeah. Our honorary fireman. If I don't come back, that means leave.
I got the gone.
Since this is the, uh, you know, this has already happened a couple of times this evening, where you send Mr. Holden out to make sure we have an all-clear. If not, we will, uh, be leaving the building. Send him the check from mine, sir.
Proceed, please. Also with me tonight with Abington Construction is Patricia Bartel, uh, to answer any questions regarding Abington. Michael Carr owns the property. Also owns the construction company, Abington Construction. The lot is located on the assessor's map as map 267, Lot 9. It's at 195 West Road. Uh, to describe the parcel, to the north is the Union Labor Building, uh, which is here. Uh, to the south is, um, F-Series, which is a automotive storage facility that I recently was before this board with the permitting. Um, to the west is West Road, and to the east are the vacant lots, um, known as the George Op, George Acropolis Parcel and the, um, I have all the parcels, the vacant lot that you see up to, um, Lafayette Road. Uh, also along the back of the site is a 60-foot-wide, um, service road right-of-way, that extends to other parcels in the industrial park and service for those people that, right now, it's just a right-of-way, and I think in the future will be extended for other projects. Parcel has a 9,875-square-foot, um, building on it right now with parking and a gravel lay-down at the rear of the site. Uh, because the, we're building a 19,000-square-foot building with associated parking, we're gonna actually be increasing the green area on the site, uh, from 19.8% to 30.9%. The reason being is that the entire back of the site is gravel now, and that's not considered open space. We're gonna be providing, um, low-man seated areas and vegetation to, uh, enhance the site and also to, um, increase the green area. Structure coverage right now is 5.3%. We're proposing to go up to 25.5%. allowable in the district is 50%. Sewer and domestic water services, uh, for the light are, are adequate as they are now. When they originally built the building, they considered the fact that they were going to expand it. So there's a cleanup in the back of the building low enough that'll allow them to internally plum the facility and expand it. They're going to have some floor drains, so we're gonna have an internal grease and grit trap to trap anything that would be traveling through those floor drains. And the detail is shown on the plans for that. Because the building's being expanded, and, um, it's going to have a, uh, construction component to it, we're gonna be providing a new fire suppression service so the entire building will be sprinkled. New underground electric service for the building will be provided from full off the south side, going underground to a transformer pad next to the existing building. As far as landscape buffer around the parcel, part of the F-Series approval was that they would provide a chain link fence with vinyl slats, so that would be the south side. When Mr. Carr did his building in 1987, he planted a dense, um, white pine buffer along the northern side. And along the back, along the right-of-way area, not to the edge of his property, we're going to be providing a chain link fence with vinyl slats as well. And we're also going to provide some landscape improvements, just putting some trees in the site and so forth, enhancing the front, as well as putting some pines around the site. We've designed the, designed the drainage system to accommodate the two 10 and 25-year storm events, which exceed the town's requirements. One of the things that we looked at in this site is that there are, it's a flat site. One of the things that we looked at in this site is that there are, it's a flat site, like everything else on West Road, and it's hard to get detentions and detention and structures out there and still have positive drainage off the site. We looked at different ways of doing this, as well as recharging the groundwater. So what we've designed is an infiltration system along the edge of the building, so your roof drains will pitch, or there will be no roof drains, it'll be the roof runoff will pitch to the north and south. Into a stone, into a stone infiltration basin, and then that will have a perforated pipe through it, which water will collect, and if it does actually fill up, then it will discharge into the city drainage system. We've designed it so that you're going to have most of the capacity within the stone and the pipe, so that that's where you're going to get your detention, it's going to be a subsurface detention with infiltration. Sheet flow off the parking lot towards these infiltration areas and then around the sides. There is a flow that comes across the George Acropolis parcel. Previously, the water, long before the site was developed, the water ran towards Route One. When they excavated and changed the hydrology there, the water runs towards West Road, and you will see there's some real erosion on the site in that area, and what we've done is we've provided that the water will continue to run around the side of the site towards West Road, runoff that's not associated with our development. We were before TAC, and TAC had seven stipulations, and I just, we've addressed those. The first one was that they wanted to know what, on our legend, RWW meant, and that means retaining wall wood. We have a little wood retaining wall along the edge of the entrance to the front of the building. We've provided an oil grit separator detail to the plans. We've added screening around the dumpster in the back, and we've added "do not enter" sign and a one-way sign to more control the access as a, people travel around the site. It's intended for one-way travel, that the office personnel will be in front, the people working in the back will travel in from the north and around out, so we have signage to control that. The people that will be traveling there are regular employees, so it's not getting the general public in there. So once they start going there, they're going to know how to travel to the site. The sixth stipulation was we have added a note saying that there's existing floodlights on this building, and we're going to have those replaced, as well as put new lighting in that will make dark sky-friendly type lights. And the last stipulation was actually on the plans already stating that the city will get a copy of the NOI and the NOT for the permits. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruptions. Just so one knows, their fire trucks are outside in the, for the 1895 building, so there is fire out there, but not a fire, but the fire apparatus is out there. I don't, we haven't been asked to leave the building.
No. Nor has Elvis.
Nor has Elvis. Huh? Oh, yeah.
Plus, we got a fireman ready.
No, no. I'm heading for that door.
So, again, are there questions for the applicant at this time? Mr. Hopely?
I do. Eric, one of the stipulations talked about the oil-water grease separated detail being added to the plan, and I noticed that on C6, you have added that to the plan. However, I couldn't find where that's used.
It's going to be an internal structure.
Inside the building?
Yes.
Then how does its outfall tie in? Where does that?
It's going to be all internally plummed. Their floor drains will tie into that, and then it'll continue through the building because the existing sanitary line is deep enough here to service the entire building.
Okay.
So there'll be floor drains that'll tie in.
Maybe you could add a note, or maybe even show the, because you know, you look for the, you've got three structures listed on C3, and then maybe a fourth structure and just indicating internal to the building, see detail on, sort of to close the loop of where it is.
Certainly.
My plumbing inspector will be looking for it, and I'll be able to take him to this plan and say, "See? That's where it is."
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Ritchie.
Eric, a couple of questions. One is, I didn't see any erosion control on the plan anywhere.
Yeah, we have the, the notes on the plan and the details, but yeah, I don't necessarily show the exact locations.
Okay. The other thing is, did you do any analysis of the existing onsite soils to use an infiltration trench?
Yeah, actually, we did a geotech report. Gillespie did it, and our analysis was more concerned, we had done the analysis, made some assumptions, because the Gillespie report was following behind, and our assumptions are more conservative than the Gillespie report. And also, if you look through the analysis, what we're discharging back into the ground, per the analysis, is miniscule. It's .01 CFS. It's, it really...
That's from your roof runoff?
Yeah. Most of the storage, or most of the runoff is going into the storage area of the perforated pipe and the stone around it, and then, according to the analysis, will continue out. But in reality, as the small storm events, it's all going to percolate in the ground.
Okay. And one last question. It looks like you've got Catch Basin One that goes down to Catch Basin Two that goes to Catch Basin Three. What happens after Catch Basin Three? I guess that would be the drainage on the west side as it goes south to north?
Yeah, Catch Basin Three ties into the existing storm, sorry. Catch Basin Three ties into the existing storm drains.
Okay. All right. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Chairman? Just a couple of comments. I want to thank you for adding the dark sky friendly lighting. Appreciate that as we move forward to making that a true standard. Glad to see that you're adding that. Snow storage is great, thank you. And one question I do have, is there a possibility of getting any of those as a motorcycle pad? Any of those front spaces? I know they're existing.
Yes, we can do motorcycle. I wouldn't suggest any bicycle, just in the fact that none of the Abington employees live in...
Just basically, just for a motorcycle pad, in case anyone, nice sunny day. Someday, I will get mine. You hear that, honey?
Better ask.
Mr. Chairman, you'll have plenty of places to park it, too, I might have.
Absolutely.
You could be like the Land Use Biker Gang, you know? Rumble into town.
Any other questions? If not, Mr. Corbella, I'm sorry, and then Mr. Hopely.
Is there a, is there a roof over the loading dock?
What you're seeing is that hatch there is a concrete wheel pad, so that loading docks typically fail where the wheels are, so that we specify them to be concrete, so it won't fail.
Mr. Hopely? I guess picking up what John's question on Catch Basin Three, without the table saying there's an invert out, would anyone know to connect it to anything? Like the person in the field, putting it in?
On my note three, it says, "Match inverts to flow line," in the lower right-hand corner.
Which sheet?
On the grading plan. Sheet C3.
Ah, that's what that means. Okay. Thanks. Yeah. The guy in the trench knows that one.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak? Two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public, two, four against this application? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, Board?
Motion approved. Second?
With stipulations?
With stipulations, that...
Agreeable to the second? Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just one question for Mr. Reese. You mentioned erosion control and the specificity of where they're going to place that. Is it necessary to put that on the plan, or just the idea that there's erosion control is satisfactory?
I think, being that this plan's pretty simple, I think that should suffice.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our final for tonight, and that is item K. A public meeting is convened to consider an amendment to the zoning map to rezone land located off Banfield and Constitution Avenue from office research to industrial. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 274 as lots 1A, 1C, 1D, and 2.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
My name is Bernie Pelech. I'm here on behalf of 360 Constitution Ave, LLC, which is the party that initiated this request with the City Council for the rezoning. The rezoning involves four parcels of land, and I have, and you probably already have in your packet, letters addressed to the mayor and council from the other three property owners whose land would be affected, which basically all state that they are in support of the rezoning of the land from office research to industrial, but I will, for the record, submit those again.
Thank you.
This is a relatively small area of land at the location of Banfield and Constitution, which I guess in 1995 was placed into an office research zone when many parcels of land were placed into an office research zone, and since that time, we've had the wonder of the P's Development Authority and Office Research MECA, and, which now results in a situation where we have hundreds of thousands of square feet of office research, some of it vacant at P's. And there has developed a niche in the City of Portsmouth for industrial land. I guess the best example I can give you is probably 140 Banfield Road, where an industrial zone piece of land of just a couple of acres was developed by a client of mine and turned into small, I hate to use an analogy, but Autumn Pond Park and Greenland type of industrial condominiums. And there seems to be a demand and a need for that type of thing for your local plumber, electrician, contractor, who needs 2,000, 3,000 square feet of space to park their vans and to have an office, or your local landscaping company or sprinkler company. They're too small. P's doesn't want to deal with them. They're not big enough to own their own piece of land in an industrial park, yet six or eight of them would make a fairly good-sized building in an industrial zone, and that's what we're trying to capture here, is to be able to find suitable tenants for this type of a use in this zone, and it can happen very quickly if the property is rezoned from office research to industrial. Whereas, as you know, much of our OR property sits vacant or is seeking variances for other types of use in the city. We've submitted the matrix to the department. The department has submitted their comments and responses. We believe that it's appropriate for the Board to act upon this this evening and make a favorable recommendation to the City Council that the rezoning go forward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in the public meeting? Anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Will.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the City Council to change the proposed laws to the industrial, from office research to the industrial zone.
Second. Thank you. Moving second.
And just to speak to my motion very briefly, as you all know, in the master planning session, I had serious concerns that we're losing piece-by-piece industrial land throughout the city. Industrial land is, at least in modern times, is an opportunity for us to create, create jobs using the land that are higher-paying than, say, commercial property would utilize. And I like the idea of having small offices that the small businessperson who can't be touched by P's is able to use, and it means that it's a higher amount of income coming into the city, not just from the business owner, but from the workers that work that land as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we proceed, I just do want to make one correction on a memorandum that was put out to us, and that is regarding the, it's our second one, that it's not Deer Street?
Yeah.
Okay. We can make that change. Ms. Hayden.
I was going to say the same thing. We're good.
Oh, okay. See? Great minds think alike. Counsel Freddie.
I would just make a comment that we've been challenged because we can't get industrial uses that work, and this is a great example of what does, and I think Ray is right. I'm continually concerned and pleased, by the way, concerned and now pleased to see the memorandum of Tanner and Associates, which we'll get to later, to address the further use of office research. My concern is that if we drag our feet with the reanalysis of office research in general, not with regard to the proposal before us this evening, that we will see nibbling away by variance without an appropriate policy, so the sooner the better, and in particular with regard to office research. But this particular use in an industrial setting serves a need of the smaller service-type industrial uses. That's great.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other discussion? Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, second.
Oh, thank you, George. Then seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye.
Yay for industrial land.
Well, we did, we still finished up earlier than I expected, but we did say that we were going to table the rest of the meeting. Correct.
What I would suggest is you table all the remaining items to your November 17 meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion? So moved? Moving second to table the rest of the City Council referrals and requests and new business to our next regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but I have a question, and that is, at what point are we starting to push ahead without getting through it? I'm just curious.
What I was going to suggest next was that we were going to ask you to schedule a work session with Mr. Tanner for your next meeting. My suggestion is, you have the materials. Why don't you continue to review them? If you have discussion or comments, share them with the department. And I'd like to ask, if the Board would, to set a work session of approximately one hour with Mr. Tanner prior to the start of your next meeting, perhaps 6:30 to 7:30, which would allow you to get into that. Then when that item comes up, if you feel like all the issues are addressed, we could move forward with it, or you can continue to work on it, but we won't have lost any time at that point.
Okay. And my next, before I finish calling the question, how is our, how's our agenda shaping up for next month?
Actually, your next TAC meeting is only about four or five applications, so it should be less than what you have now, even with the addition of Loeb.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just ask of the Chair to harp on this again, because I don't have a lot of pet peeves, but it's the one that I do have. If, I would not want to sacrifice Planning Board deliberation time on this particular office research memorandum. If we have agenda items that are relatively new, so that we don't feel like we're not giving people an appropriate hearing, if however, some of these items that are before us have been floating along for a long time, I'm concerned about that as well, and I just, I'm curious. I don't, I don't know.
Since you've tabled these, these would be the first items taken up.
We have nothing, we have no other business that's currently on the table, other than what was placed on the table this evening, and these ones here.
Thank you.
And actually, those applications will go to the end of the line for the new applications that came in, since they were tabled at their request, so you'll start off with that item.
Thanks.
Hopefully with a work session first, and then right into that.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. With that, to our hair and adjournment.
Go move.
Second. Good night, everyone. Thank you. Here's why I'm a bit neck about this.